I'd like to call the
Next year.
Mentor City Council Regular Meeting for February 4, 2025, to order. Invitation tonight will be given by Councilperson Marn.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
Pledge allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
He is excused tonight.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Okay. All right, we'll start with the approval of minutes. Council, you are in receipt of the January 21, 2025 Work Session Minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay, and Council, you are also in receipt of the January 21, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, the two ordinances pertaining to short-term rentals will remain on the table for now. Moving on to new legislation. Ordinance number 25-0-010.
An ordinance to revise the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor, December 2024, as amended by adopting current replacement pages and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Joe?
Yes, yes, thank you, Council. This is a normal housekeeping item. Our publisher has printed the hard copies to, that will appear in the code, so really nothing but a housekeeping item on this, and obviously I encourage its adoption.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 25-0-010 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-011.
An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Melonowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Members of Council, this ordinance does two things. In Section 1, it authorizes a temporary cash advance out of the city's general fund in the amount of $16,665.48, and this cash is being moved into two separate grant funds, a state grant fund and a federal grant fund. Section 2 also authorizes appropriation revisions to the, as mentioned, grant funds above, and also, in addition to that, there are three other items, two increases to the general fund, one to the street fund for items that weren't sufficient in the original 2025 appropriation ordinance, largest item being the 1.3 million roughly for the water park slide install. I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-011 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-012.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc., for the purchase of 25 Motorola mobile radios and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Gunch.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Members of Council, Police Department will need to begin replacing our current portable radios that are out of support and are failing. We researched different model radios on the market and determined that the Motorola APX N70 meets our expectations and requirements. We plan on purchasing 25 of the N70 radios. The N70 radios and accessories are listed on State of Ohio contract pricing. However, the price quoted by Motorola Solutions for the purchase is below the contract pricing. The purchase of these radios is part of our larger countywide safety forces purchase, which is resulting in a lower cost per radio. The final quote for 25 radios is $173,671.25. I recommend approval of the purchase.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-012 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-013.
An ordinance accepting and authorizing the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council for the 2025 Energize Community Grant Program and to perform all actions necessary to accept grant funds.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vernon, please.
Mr. Filippiak, members of Council, the city is eligible to receive an energy savings grant from NOPEC. This year's grant is $106,398, and the funds will be used for parking lot lighting and HVAC upgrades. Recommend approval and happy to answer any questions.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 25-0-013 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-014.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a pass-through grant agreement with the Lake Development Authority for the Mentor Erosion Mitigation Project and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of Council, Council, you're aware of the fact that the city received a $3 million grant through the Ohio Capitol Budget back in 2024 for the purpose of the restoration of the walls of our channel harbor that leads into the marina out to Lake Erie. There was a $3 million accompanying grant that was also given to the Lake Development Authority for a total of $6 million. That is the project cost for, for the restoration of that channel. Lake Development Authority is the lead agency, so we are proposing to enter into the subrecipient agreement so that they can expend those funds as the, as the contract proceeds. That is expected to start on February 27 and conclude on December 1 of this year.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 25-0-014 has been approved. And next up is ordinance number 25-0-015.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Lake Development Authority and Mentor Harbor Yachting Club for the purpose of sharing costs and expenses attributed to the Mentor Lagoon's navigable outer water channel and designated water revetment walls restoration project and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. And similarly, the same project for the reconstruction of, of the channel walls. One of the grants, the grant that the city received, also has a $500,000 local match requirement. Of that $300,000, in-kind services has already been credited for what was spent for a earlier project that was reviewed at the channel, at the mouth of the channel, which remains $200,000 for us to match for this project. That would be split between the three parties who benefit from the project, ourselves, Lake Development Authority, and the Mentor Harbor Yacht Club. So this is our commitment for our one-third of that local match.
Mr. President, so that split, we are responsible for $66,000-some dollars, right?
Yes. That's, that's what we're committing to by this ordinance.
Mr. President? Go ahead, Mr. Filippiak. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Mr. Marn.
So, we were talking about that, since we have to dredge it each year when we redo the channel and the walls in the channel, you don't have to dredge that year. Will that come out of that existing $200,000 that's owed by the three parties?
So, well, that will just be a cost savings to us because that's part of the project. Actually, if I could ask Mr. Swigger, he may offer you a few details about that project, since, again, we're not managing the project, but it's obviously important to us, and we want to make a few comments, Mr. Swigger.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. This project will rehabilitate, strengthen, and improve the hydraulics of the 100-year-old channel by encapsulating the channel walls with large 2- to 5-ton limestone boulders. The existing sunken barge on the west side of the channel will be removed. The barge will be replaced by two steel cribs filled with stone to effectively reduce the channel width to 80 feet near the marina. The width of the channel at the mouth of the harbor will also be reduced to approximately 140 feet at the surface and 80 feet at the bottom of the channel to lessen wave energy within the channel. Overall, water depth of approximately 15 feet will result inside the channel from the project. The work is expected to begin in earnest in March with mobilization taking place at the end of this month. Stone placement work will begin on the west side of the channel first with the contractor hauling stone through the Mentor Harbor Yacht Club. Stone placement on the east side of the harbor and hauling through the Mentor Lagoon's marina is expected to begin in May and end in, excuse me, and end in early October. 30 to 40 trucks per day are expected during this time period to access the harbor through, by way of ADOC Road. The contractor is responsible to repair any damage to roadways caused by the hauling. Work hours are expected to be 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Monday through Friday with occasional weekend work coordinated with the marina. Overall, approximately 60,000 tons of stone will be placed with, with this project, 25,000 of which will be delivered through Mentor Lagoon's marina, and hauling through the marina is expected to take 64 workdays to complete. Thank you.
So there's going to be a lot of activity out there this year, Council, to, again, to just reiterate what your question, Councilman. We will save some money off of that dredging, but if you recall, we're going to be applying most of those resources over to EDOC, which has a lot of dredging requirements this year, so be able to utilize that, that money and put that to good use.
Mr. President, just to finish up, as Council knows, there's a lot of time and effort of all of us that went into this and in the administration, so congratulations, administration, we finally got this done after, God, I don't know how many years. Ray, you have any idea, do you remember? It's over a decade.
I had brown hair then.
It's been a while. And, but I know I'm going to miss a bunch of people, but from Mentor Harbor Yacht Club, Mike Petrie, who headed the project, Chuck Stevenson, that we've all met with and talked for 20 years. It's his design, 20-year-old design, and that's what ODNR and everyone decided to go with. Doug Price and many others. Dave Anderson and his staff from Lake Development and all the, all the people there that are on that board and help finance this and feed the dollars our way and everybody else's way. Mentor Lake Mayor Dave Eva had a lot to do with it, too. Dave Joyce and his staff of being there countless times. Matt Dolan, congratulations, Matt Dolan. I just saw today that he's the new CEO of NEO, so that's, congratulations to him, but he was a big push in helping, you know, us get over the hurdle when he was in his former seat and helping us attract those dollars. Of course, our very own Jerry Serino, and last but not least, State Representative Jamie Callender, who was the driving force behind it. I'd like to thank everybody else in case I miss somebody either in this room, in the administration, or out there, because it's a long project and a lot went into it, but anytime that we could receive $6.5 million, we'll take it, that's for sure, between federal, state, and local government. Thank you.
Council.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 25-0-015 has been approved. Moving on to second readings, we have one. Ordinance number 25-0-001.
An ordinance enacting Section 151.011, Part 1, Title 5 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Mentor, 2006, as amended, to establish a nepotism policy.
We have one speaker who wishes to speak on this item tonight. For all speakers tonight, please remember you have four minutes, and when you come up to the podium, please give your name and address. Jeff Cook.
There's comments going on back here, they're already starting, so...
Okay, we're going to have peace and quiet, or else people will have to leave the chamber.
Okay. Good evening, Council. I'm here tonight to, I'm sorry, Jeff Cook, 5966 Andrews Road, Mentor-on-the-Lake, Ohio. Good evening, Council. I'm here tonight to urge you to pass this neptotism ordinance. I bet that if you asked your citizens, not a single one of them would agree to letting you hand out jobs to your family or friends. I took time to look this up in Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 102, Section 2921, 42, states using the authority or influence of a public position to secure authorization of employment of a family member is prohibited. During the council meeting of March 5, 2024, council voted 7 to 0 to approve ordinance number 24025. My understanding is that at the time, almost all of you were unaware that the job you were creating in engineering had been promised to Scott Marn's son, Dylan Marn. Late last year, I requested all the emails regarding this job. I discovered that the job had been promised to Dylan long before council vote in December of '23. I also learned that this job was never posted to give an opportunity for others to apply. I cannot see how Mr. Marn can claim that he was not involved or had no knowledge or influence on the creation of the job for his son. At your last council meeting, this neptotism ordinance was first introduced. Five members of council voted to present neptotism in Mentor. Two council members, Scott Marn and Matt Donovan, voted abstain. What should the residents of Mentor make of that? Smile. Does that mean that they feel the council members' families should be entitled to well-paying city jobs before everyone else? I have a feeling I know why Scott Marn voted abstain. I don't know why Matt Donovan also voted abstain, but I'm going to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Council.
Move to, move to suspend.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Stain.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Abstain.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 25-0-001 will be put on for a third reading in two weeks at the next council meeting. Okay, third readings, we have none. Managers report, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of Council, Council registration for 2025-year summer camps begins this Thursday, February 6, at 8:00 a.m. for residents of Mentor, and on Monday, February 10, at 8:00 a.m. for nonresidents. Online registration is available and is highly recommended. The City of Mentor Recreation Department offers more than 100 different camp experiences each summer for kids ages 4 and older, and I know, Council, that you get a lot of inquiries from residents about this, and we tell everyone every year, you know, make sure that you're registered ahead of time so that when you get online to, to actually register your, your child, that you, you can do it quickly. You're not going through that, that registration routine, because literally some of these camps will sell out in minutes. Mr. Kaminski, do you want to make any comments that might assist in that?
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Besides doing it online, you could also do it by phone, as well as coming to person at the recreation center upstairs in the Parks Department. We overstaff that morning to try to accommodate everybody, but like Mr. Filippiak indicated, the majority of camps sell out very quickly, so we highly recommend pre-registering for your username and password. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminski. City of Mentor will also host a job fair on Saturday, February 22, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the main lobby of the Mentor Municipal Center. Representatives from several departments will be on hand to discuss current and future full-time, part-time, temporary, and seasonal positions throughout the city. You can visit our website at workformenter.com to preview current available positions, and for questions or additional information, you also, you may also contact the Human Resource Office at 440-974-5795, or at, contact them at hr@cityofmentor.com. The Lake County Council on Aging's Meals on Wheels program is also looking for volunteer drivers to deliver meals and volunteers to assist in the kitchen packing meals. You can learn more about this on our city's website, again, at cityofmentor.com/news. And then finally, Council, we have one new business in the city to announce, the Hot Works Fitness Studio at 820 Broadmoor Road, and we appreciate their investment in our city and wish them well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Clerk's correspondence, Julie.
Council's in receipt of a liquor permit transfer from Mentor Deli LLC, DBA Manhattan Deli, to Mentor, to Hamway Shaker Corp., DBA Manhattan Deli, at 890 Mentor Avenue, Unit A and Patio. That is all.
Thank you. Commission committee reports, we have none. Council, all business? New business? All right, so I'm going to start with new business. Council, we have a request for the use of city funds to send two members of the Municipal Planning Commission to the Annual American Planning Association Conference in Denver, Colorado, March 29 through April 1, 2025. Do I hear a motion to approve that expenditure?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, Julie.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So it's limited to two members?
No, it's, it's, I was told by the commission chair that only two members are interested in going.
So, there's seven members on planning?
Right.
So what if the instance was that four or five members wanted to go?
Well, I think that would create a quorum out there, and I don't think that would be possible. So... Correct about that, Joe? Would that create a quorum?
Well, I guess the bigger issue is, you know, Council would potentially disapprove that or approve it at that future point in time. If you think it's too high of an expenditure, or there's other reasons not to send that many commission members to the APA, then certainly Council would act as it deems appropriate at that point in time.
So if more than two wanted to go, or pardon me, more than three wanted to go, we would have them decide? And then the three would come to us or future councils in deciding, or would a future council decide on who they would choose to go?
If you, if a future council would decide on how many, if any, should go.
Correct.
Yep.
But you didn't answer the question. Question is, let's say four Planning Commission members want to go, and you just said you can't have a quorum so only three could go. Who decides on what three would attend? Because they're a separate body. We appoint them, but we allow them to have their separate opinion and their separate business philosophy.
Four could go. It wouldn't necessarily violate the Open Meetings Act unless there was some prearranged discussion of the public business while they were in attendance at APA. So they would just have to be cautioned to avoid any, any such occurrence.
Okay, and then they would have to fill out an expense report and everything else, and then the future council president would have to sign that expense report, or would the rest of the council have to vote on that expense report?
Again, it was subject to council approval. Correct. The expenses are known. There's a budget based on the, you know, the attendance, the enrollment there, the costs of the, typically, the, there's a conference hotel, so those, those are a block of rooms that are reserved. There's a meal per diem, there's transportation to and from the airport, there's the airfare. The Assistant Clerk of Council has a nice itemization as to what the anticipated expenses are, so it's, you know, in terms of what, what it will cost, pretty close to the dollar amount, Council at that point in time can determine whether or not it's an appropriate expenditure to send, you know, X number of, of Planning Commission members, if any, to the APA.
Well, Mr. Kirchner, Mr. Krieger, you both were on Planning Commission. How'd you do it back in the past?
Well, you just put in the expenses. Well, back then, there was no per diem. You had to, you had to turn in all your expenses for approval, and then the council president or mayor, depending on what year it was, they had to, they had to sign the, the form.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just what Mr. Kirsner said.
All right, makes sense.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirsner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
All right, so that's approved.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would make a motion to an amendment to the settlement agreement made in the matter of Charles M. Andrews, trustee of the Gloria M. Andrews Trust, et cetera, versus City of Menner, Ohio Northern District, case number 120CV0058, for approval.
Any discussion before, call the roll?
What? Mr. President?
Yep.
So what are we exactly approving? What we received?
Yes.
That's correct. Council was forwarded by my office under work product privilege and a proposed amendment to the settlement agreement. As you know, there's material changes to that which is purported to enhance the design guidelines for the Echo Hill development, including proposals to enhance the rear elevations with additional architectural detailing and finished materials specifically for the housing that would be visible from Belglow and Eleanor, in addition to some buffer enhancements and other landscaping enhancements. It would also allow a larger volume builder to construct the 35 homes that are approved.
Mr. Donovan, you met with your residents
Yes.
last week, so everything that you talked about, then you reported back?
Yes.
Okay. And there's been no changes in the last week?
No.
All right, good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. No other discussion? Julie, please call the roll.
I don't have a second.
Was there a second?
Second.
Is there no second?
Are you suspending or voting on it?
Janet's seconded. Didn't you? You don't have to second it, right? I thought you did.
I'm happy to.
Did anybody make a motion?
I did. You did.
Just basically.
I'll second it. Scott's seconded. Okay.
All right, we ready?
Yeah.
Let's go. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirsner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
You know, before I make that vote, I want to comment on Councilman Kirsner taking the advantage and going to meeting with the home builder to add these additional enhancements to the neighborhood and that development, which obviously appeased the surrounding neighbors, which, thank you very much, Mr. Kirsner, and my vote is yes.
Mr. President, just to say something about that, Mr. Kirsner actually didn't put the enhancements in. My residents and myself had a meeting and actually put those home enhancements and the extra buffering in, just to let you know that.
Okay.
Thank you to my residents, too, for all their time. Good try, though.
All right, so I.
Oh, wait a second. You know, if you're going to bring this up, you know, wait a second. First of all, you met with Pulte and told him to get lost, basically. You weren't interested in doing it.
That's not what I said.
Well, you told him you weren't interested. Secondly, I went, I took.
That's not exactly what I said.
That's what I was told.
No.
Okay, secondly, I was, I said, I asked Councilman Blake and Freeman, I said, you know, I'd like to meet separately with these guys, I think this is something we can work out. So I did, I met them, and we had a discussion in Menner, and I said, you know, I know you're a national builder and you don't meet the requirements of a custom builder per the 100 or less homes a year definition. So I said, this is an opportunity for you to make some headway with the city because I know you're going to be building in Bolton as well. So we sat down, talked about it, I took them over to the development across the street from the mall, and I showed them, I said, can you imagine what I might have a problem with that you do here? And they said, what is it? I said, all your garage doors are the same style, they're the same color, all your roofs, all your shingles are the same color. And I said, your ranches are all the same, basically, and I said, these are things that would have to change. So I took them over to Sausalito, where they're building custom homes, and I said, what do you think the difference is what you do and what they do here? I says, there's not much. I said, their garage doors are different, there's different builders here, and I said, I said, these are some things that you would be asked to do. So we went back and we sat down, and I said, all right, can you do 20% ranches? They said, we can do that. I said, the half acre in the front that is left alone for open space, I said, how about we do something there? And they said, they would completely landscape it, they would put brick columns up with wrought iron. We talked about the buffer on the north side, they said they would try to work with the administration to reconfigure that base, detention base, and so they could add more buffering, mounting on that north side. They said that they would do more additions on the back of the buildings to make it like gables in the back, to make it more appealing. They offered, they also said, what else they said, that they would enhance the buffering along the perimeter of the property, and they put that in writing. And the next time, and the next thing, it went to the law director. After that, he set up a meeting, which, by the way, he didn't give one resident that I know of the documents that Pulte had put out on the development. I know I had a friend who lives on Belglow, and I gave him those documents so he could review them. So he came back and said he did receive them. I asked him if he had gotten any from the ward councilman, he said he didn't get any. I said, fine. So I went to their meeting, and I said, made the same presentation I'm seeing here, and I said, you know, just Pulte, this was an opportunity, I said, for Pulte to do something out of the box, so to speak, because it's only 35 homes where they're more, they build more like 100 and some homes at a time. And I said, it'll give you an opportunity to build up some credit with the council as well as the residents. So that's where it was left. After that, I don't know what Mr. Donovan's talking about enhancements he got, other than some buffering that I know of, but that's where I'll leave it. But he also, this wasn't anything personal, it was just left to be, let's do what we think is best to get this done. Because it also means that you're going to have one builder here, instead of having maybe 10 different builders, where you're going to have custom building going on constantly over a course of years. If you look at the Sausalito project, they've got about six or seven homes out of 35 built so far, and that's been going on for a couple of years. This way, you've got one builder, and you've got commitments from them that they're going to do a certain way, certainly not what they're used to doing, and all the garage doors will be different style, different colors, the shingles will be different styles, so that's where I want to leave it. I just wanted to say that, you know, there wasn't any participation by other people other than the ward councilmen. Because this isn't a ward issue, this is a settlement of a lawsuit that we are all involved in. So it doesn't really mean that someone's stepping in on someone's ward and stepping on their toes.[1557.41]